Okay, it is 3:30. I'd like to call the order.
But there's the public in the waiting room.
There we go.
I raise my dog.
I agree. Yep, I'd rather be doing something. I hear you, pal.
I'm not gonna be able to win right now on that one. All right, can we, can we go, Parker? Jesus, dog. We good to go?
Yeah, you're good.
The dog's got an opinion.
If it hears a bark in the neighborhood, it wants to make sure to get a word in. There's no doubt.
All right.
All right, we'll just have to deal with it. Um, okay, I'd like to call to order the Malibu City Council's zoning ordinance revisions and code enforcement subcommittee, commonly known as the RACIS, special meeting for Wednesday, March 30th, 2022. Can I have roll call, please?
Councilmember Mikey Pearson.
That's a yes.
Councilmember Steve Yurey.
I'm here also.
And you have a quorum.
Okay, can I have a motion for approval of the agenda?
I will approve the agenda, Mike. I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I will second that motion.
Cool.
We have roll call on that?
Yeah.
Commissioner Yurey?
Yes.
I'm sorry, councilmember. I'm in the habit.
You can call me anything you want.
Okay, councilmember Pearson.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Oof, that was a tough one. We got there, though. Can I have a report on the posting of the agenda?
The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on April 11th, 2022.
Okay, and I apologize to the public, this meeting was delayed. Moving forward, we're at item 3A, approval of minutes.
Yeah, and this is, I mean, I was not around when these minutes were taken. So, you know, I have no doubt that Mary Lyndon recording of this stuff is totally accurate, but I'm not sure, should, do I just abstain from this? How do I do that? Any idea?
Well, since there's just the two of you, it would be helpful if you both vote for it.
I'll vote for it. I'll vote yes. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Okay, I'll second, and I'll say that I've asked that question before in the same situation, and the answer was, you know, if they appeared to be in order, and you know, that's, you can vote.
I got it. Okay.
Right. Can we have?
Commissioner Yurey?
Yes.
Councilman Pearson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay.
We are to item 3B now, implementation of land use policy 3.18, addressing the use of rodenticides, insecticides, and herbicides. Can we have a report, please?
Yes, good afternoon, everyone. The item you have before you today is regarding the implementation of land use policy 3.18 to prohibit the use of rodenticides, indenticides, and herbicides. Next slide, please. In December of 2021, the city council directed staff to develop an ordinance to implement and enforce LUP 3.18 and to work with community stakeholders to develop this ordinance. Since then, staff has conducted several meetings with community stakeholders regarding implementation and enforcement of this policy. Next slide, please. To provide a brief background, the earth-friendly management policy was approved in 2019 to govern pest management on city-owned, managed, and leased properties. In September of 2020, AB 1788 was approved, which prohibited the use of second-generation anticoagulant rodenticides and provided an exemption for eradication of invasive species on offshore islands. And in June 28th, 2021, the city council adopted the California Coastal Commission's amendment or modification of the city's proposed pesticide ban. Amendments to the LCP and LUP 3.18 pertaining to the citywide ban and prohibition of pesticides went into effect on September 8th, 2021, which amending this policy created a policy mechanism to allow the city to create regulatory framework to address the use of pesticides, rodenticides, and indenticides throughout the city. As mentioned earlier, the city staff has worked with this community stakeholders since then to develop this ordinance, which is a purpose of our discussions today. Next slide, please. In discussions with the community stakeholders, a policy implementation was recommended in lieu of an ordinance for sake of processing time and for faster implementation. I will outline the process of implementation for both a policy and an ordinance, as outlined on this slide. First, a policy, the procedure would be that it would be adopted by the council resolution and revised on an as-needed basis. In regards to certification, it would not require a California Coastal Commission certification. For enforcement, it would not be a law, and it may be legally challenged, which could present some challenges. And in terms of provisions, it's not explicitly defined within the city's zoning ordinance. In regards to an ordinance outlined below, the process would be conducting public hearings before both the Planning Commission and City Council. This would be required for both adoption and a future amendment. Certification, public hearings before the Planning Commission and City Council would be followed by a certification, oftentimes with modifications, by the California Coastal Commission. In regards to enforcement, Malibu Municipal Code and LCP enforcement procedures would be a little bit more difficult to legally challenge. Next slide, please. Outlined here is a draft policy that staff worked on with the community stakeholders. This was a part of your staff report as an attachment. This just details various recommendations as provided by the community stakeholders to implement this policy. Next slide, please. Staff is seeking guidance from the subcommittee on whether the committee wishes to move forward with a draft policy document or a draft ordinance to the LIP. If an ordinance is recommended, staff will return the item for future guidance on terms and provisions. This concludes my presentation, and myself and Richard are available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation, Jessica. Can we hear from public speakers, please?
Yes, our first speaker will be Pat Healy, followed by Joel Schulman, and then John Maza. So, Pat Healy, are you available?
I'm here.
Hi, Pat.
I would, I would prefer to hear poison-free speak first, and because I want to hear what they have to say before my comments. So, can that be allowed?
Yeah, that's fine. That's fine.
Okay, thank you.
And would that be Joel Schulman?
Yes.
And is Joel Schulman available?
Hi, hi, guys. Hi, Mikey. Hi, Steve. Hi, Richard. Jessica. Yeah, well, of course, our main concern is that nothing, you know, the community is very confused. They still see the poisons all over. They get to us, they say, what's happening? We're seeing animals still getting sick and dying, and we're seeing the poisons all over. So, they need clarity, and they, and they need it as soon as possible. I'm, you know, I am, I'd like to know, yeah, a policy, okay, I'm not sure what you mean by a law or not a law. The legally challenged part I could sort of see, but I mean, it's got to be something that we could tell people that the pesticide companies, you can't do that, or we can tell Malibu Colony Plaza, you cannot have this. So, what we wrote is, we think a really good way of doing it with Richard and Jessica's help. So, please, let's come out of here with recommendation to the city councils to do something meaningful as soon as possible. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next speaker.
Give me just a moment. Let me re. Healy as a speaker, because I had started to.
Hello, it's my turn to speak now? Okay. One of the things that concerns me about the ordinance is it's going to take another year or two, and a policy can be implemented right away. So, I leave it up to you to decide which way you want to go, but my one thought is, if you're going for the ordinance, put the policy in place now while you are working toward the ordinance. I think one of the concerns is you lose control over, over the implementation measure, if it has to be certified by the coastal commission. And I was always under the impression, if you could put it in an ordinance, if it's more protective of, in this instance, coastal resources, it wouldn't have to go to the coastal commission for certification. So, I would like to know why it does, and it just can't be it. An ordinance will say like the basement ordinance. That's my position at this time, and I would hope I could answer questions if, or contribute more to the meeting as it goes on. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat.
And our final speaker, who had signed up in advance of the meeting, is John Maza.
Okay, John, are you there?
I am here, and I hope you bear with me just a little. I only get a minute and 32 seconds.
I am resetting the clock for you just one moment.
This has been a very long process. I don't know if you can still hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
This has been a very long process. The Rain Sales donated some money, and we hired a very good attorney on these issues with the coastal commission. Spent many meetings with the coastal commission, went over staff, Steve Hudson and his assistant, and went over every single word. And we got the city council to change, and the coastal commission approved the definition of ESHA as far as it goes for poisons. And I gave Steve this morning all the sightings, but basically, the coastal commission does not want to hear this again. Their, their statement has been that, and it's in the coastal act and our LUP, that we are in charge of determining what our definitions are under development. We determine, not the coastal commission. That's when the LIP was turned over to us, that was our assignment to govern Malibu. And they don't want to hear about this. They don't want to deal with it city by city. Cities can adopt a policy on what is under the CDP and what is required for coastal development permit. A coastal development permit is specifically allowed to be determined by the city what is required, and we specifically changed the language in our LIP with the coastal commission through the city council several months ago. And what it involves is, is we can determine, and it's been set up in this system, that the federal government determines what are class 1, 2, and 3 pesticides that are dangerous. We can, as a policy, require a CDP for those elements, and this has all been cleared. We also can enforce the requirement for a CDP because the coastal commission cannot tell us what to do. And so therefore, the policy is the preferred method that the coastal commission wants us to take. The coastal commission staff, I should say, and Ventura's already adopted our, our, our language. And basically, what it says is, our staff determines that poisons outside of the home can affect ESHA, which is policy 3.12 in our LIP, or I think it's 1.3. Because they have changed the language in such that a bird can pick up a poisoned rat and fly it to an issue. It doesn't have to be adjacent.
Excuse me, Commissioner. Mr. Maza, I do just want to let you know that for some reason, we seem to be having a technical issue, and the clock is not reflecting the speaker clock that I have running. So, you are at time if you are able to finish up.
Yeah, I'd request another minute or so to explain this, if I could, but basically, this is what they asked us to do. Chatham Brown, our attorneys, cleared every single word, every single word with them, and Richard and staff confirmed it in meetings with coastal. A policy is much easier to enforce because we can go in and bust somebody for using a 1, 2, or 3 class poison without obtaining a CDP, and then they must obtain one, which is a rather expensive process. So, it's not like finding them 50 bucks, and it will be very effective using that method. And as I say, this has all been gone through word for word over and over again. So, if you have any questions, I would hope you hire Chatham Brown, and they can go over it all with you again. But Richard has met with him. Thank you.
Thank you. If there's anyone else present in the meeting who would like to speak on this issue and did not sign up in advance, if you could please click the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen at this time.
Okay, seen nobody. We're back here at the council, and John, I was at those final meetings with Richard with the coastal commission, so I think you reflected that fairly accurately. And I'll, but I'll turn it over to Steve for your questions and comments, et cetera.
Okay.
And.
And I agree. I didn't have a chance to read through it. Look, it appears to me that the coastal commission has said, this is, they put this in our bailiwick to deal with, and said, if you, you want to develop a coastal development permit process, it says if they use these rodenticides, they've got to get a coastal permit. We've got the ability to do that. I've read through what the staff report from the coastal commission was. I read through the, the other stuff. So, I'm just wondering, there's a statement in there that says, this is going to be difficult to defend. So, can somebody tell me, if, if we find somebody doing this, how are we going to defend our position that says you can't use rodenticides? What are we going to do? Richard, Jessica, anybody?
So, the, the basis of the policy to link it back to the, I'm sorry, when I say policy, the, the draft policy in front of, in front of you guys. The basis to link it back would be to consider the placement, the use of these chemicals as development. And that then would link it back to the land use LP policy, was it 3.18, 3.8, sorry, where it talks about development that, you know, prohibiting development that involves the use of pesticides or insecticides or herbicides, rodenticides. So, the catch there is that if we move forward with a policy rather than an ordinance, we would have, we would be making that interpretation. We would be basing the, the application of these materials on a, you know, council, ideally, council-approved interpretation, rather than, you know, an actual ordinance. For example, you know, we have a height ordinance.
Here's the question. I'm trying to understand. Okay, the staff report says that we could be challenged on the statement that says this is considered development, right? That's, that's what your staff report says. All right, so let's assume we, we find somebody, and they come back and they say, I'm going to challenge you because I don't think this is development. What is our argument that says we're right? That's what I want to understand. I, I think I know the argument, but I want to hear what the city says.
That, to me, is the hard part. I don't disagree with you, councilmember. I, I think, you know, you could argue that it's development because you're placing something on the ground, it's something that has an impact to coastal resources. But to me, that, that's the hard part, is making that argument that it is development. You can talk about it having a change in intensity. And, you know, the placement of this type of chemical on the ground does have a physical effect. And so, that would be the linkage you would, would be using. Whereas if we had an ordinance, you know, ordinance is easy. Someone builds a house that's too tall, you say, hey, you're in violation of the ordinance. The, the rule clearly states. Because, you know, the catch here is the LUP is like our general plan. They're both policy documents that are designed to guide growth and shape and, and the future. And the actual how you're going to do it, the recipe, is contained in your municipal code or in the local implementation plan.
I read the coastal commission's documents, and it seems to me that they're suggesting we've got the ability to define what you have to do, what development is, and how, what, that you need a coastal development permit to do that. Are they incorrect?
No, that is correct. It, the coastal commission is, you know, I want to say that, I want to, for the worst of the mindset, but the coastal commission looks at now, hey, city, you, you've got a policy. You have something to create an ordinance based on that policy.
I don't see anything in there that says we need to create an ordinance. They, they seem to state that we've got the ability right now to define what development is and require coastal development permit if that takes place. Is that not correct?
I, I don't have such a thing from them in writing.
I do. I, I got the, the, the addendum of the coastal commission staff report that took, when they came up with this stuff. Look, here's the deal. All right, this is where I'm coming from. I think we've been dancing around this thing for a very, very long time, and I'm tired of dancing around it. I think we've got to start getting something implemented that will enable us to start dealing with these rodenticides and, and stuff that's going in out there, and waiting for an ordinance, and how long an ordinance will take us. If you guys want to go back and work on an ordinance, more power to you. But I think we got to do something in the short run, and my suggestion is, I don't know whether it's, it's, if our law, we got to get our law firm or somebody to come up with a statement for, before we get to the city council that says, how are we going to defend this policy if we put it in place? Because, I mean, you guys have written a policy. If opposed to doing an ordinance, you spent the time, you developed a policy. I assume somebody thought that was an effective means to do this. It allows us to address it immediately. But I want to make sure that we've got some ability to defend ourselves if, if somebody challenges us. And I, I mean, I, look, if our law firm can't do that for us, let me know, because I can find some other people that can come in and help us out, make that argument. But we've got, I want to see that in place before, when it comes to the city council, because I think the policy right now is the way to go. If we want to do an ordinance in the long run, let's do that. But let's get something going on that deals with these pesticides and prevents them from being used. So, I get the bottom line of this thing, get somebody to come up with an argument that makes sense that we can defend ourselves, because I'm going to vote for the policy.
Fair enough. And to answer your question about timeframe, I would state, I, I think it would be fair to say that if we were going to go the ordinance route, we're probably looking at about, I would say, about a year and a half, one year and a half to two years, because if we were to say, start a policy tomorrow, be very diligent about this, just because of noticing requirements, I, you as a council would not be able to have the second reading probably until about mid to end of September. That's, this is highly aggressive.
Yeah, look, I, I don't disagree. I mean, I'm, I'm surprised, you know, I mean, we got a staff report that says the city council requested an ordinance, and you came back with a policy, and it's been however long it took you to do that. So, I don't want to go back to the ordinance right now. I think the policy is the way to go. I'd like to see our law firm or somebody come up with an argument that says if somebody challenges our position, how are we going to defend it? Okay, because we should, I, I think there's a, you know, that's what law firms are supposed to do for us. So, let's get somebody there to help us do that, and I'm going to vote for the policy. Mikey, back to you.
You done, Steve, or you want to go more?
I'm going to get more later on, but at least from the position of the policy, that's, I think that's where I want to go. I want, I want to see us do something, because we're doing nothing, and nothing doesn't work.
Okay, I think we know where you stand. Thank you. I have spent time on this, obviously, been involved with this for quite a while. I absolutely agree the policy is the way to go. I think we can make a case that these bait boxes and poisons aren't an intensification of use that can damage ESHA. So, I, I think we can make that case, and I think we should, if we have to. So, I could go on about how I get here, but I absolutely think it's a policy. And of course, if we need to bring in an ordinance later, we can do that. We can talk about that. So, I will make a motion that we bring forward recommending a policy to the city council. The policy, the draft policy that is here, because I know it is very carefully crafted, and I have no desire to mess with that. And that would be my motion.
Mikey, I will second that with, I may add a little friendly amendment as I get down the road, but I would also like to see some law, our law firm come up. At least give us the basis of the argument we're going to make if somebody challenged, because the staff report says that's our hole, right? Our, the, the weak spot is, if somebody challenges our position that this is development, you thought it was going to be a problem. So, let's see our law firm ahead of time, tell us what the argument is to defend that. I'd like to see that included as we come, you know, it doesn't have to be the detail, but at least the concept of how that's going to be defended when it comes to the city council.
I would agree to that amendment.
Okay, let me ask another, then, Mikey, if I may have got, what are two more questions, if I could do that? Implement, or compliance on this thing. Let me, I just want to understand how this is going to work. So, let's assume I go to Ralph's. We, we passed the policy, and Ralph's has got, and I, I don't know if they do or they don't, but they've got bait boxes all around the store. And someone says, you know, they, we, we get identified, somebody identifies to the city that that's taking place. What, what happens next?
And our code, I spoke to our code enforcement manager, Doug Clevinger. Doug seen this policy. And Doug would essentially make contact with the property owner. We'd have to, of course, verify what's in the box. We have to make certain of the chemical or what it is that they're doing. And if it is in violation of this, it would then have to be removed. And then also, it would end up becoming, you know, they would be subject to, they could be subject to a citation. They'd have to, we would. Sorry, it's been a busy week. I'm leery to say the word fine, but I'd say there'd be a fee that goes along with it to cover for code enforcement's time, but it would.
Don't they think of a coastal development permit if they're caught doing this?
And if they're, I think the, the goal of this policy is to remove.
I understand. I'm just, and I don't, I don't disagree. Look, here's my problem, and it's, you and I talked about this. We've got the outside people on the outside of the city throwing fastballs at us. You know, they're playing hardball, throwing nasty curves at us, and we're kicking back with wiffle balls. All right? I mean, we've got to have some program in place that says we're in fact going to be able to enforce this thing. And there should be some penalty. And at least my understanding was, what's it cost to get a coastal development permit through the city, do you think? What ballpark number?
For some, it could be a couple thousand, but we took, I'm sure Poison Free wants to speak up at this point. But we removed the ability to get a coastal development permit to allow for, for any of these chemicals. And so, the only, I think, trigger for a coastal development permit on this would be if there, and I don't, some sort of habit. Say somebody went out there and sprayed a bunch of stuff in ESHA, that definitely would need a coastal development permit, because you'd have to do a habitat restoration.
But we're saying that if you put this, this stuff outside your house, that is development. That's what, that's what coastal commission said, right? This is considered development, and development needs a coastal development permit. I mean, why is it if they do that, that we can't go to them and say, you know, we caught you, you got to get a coastal development permit? And whatever, if it's 2,000 bucks or whatever it costs, that at least becomes a disincentive. And whatever, if it's two thousand bucks or whatever it costs, that at least becomes a disincentive for the next person to do the same thing. Isn't that what we're trying to do? We're trying to stop this.
So right now, the way that this is written, and Jessica, correct me if I'm wrong. And we're not giving somebody the opportunity to get a coastal development permit to even allow to to give them the opportunity to have this stuff on their property.
No, I'm not saying that's not my question. The question is, if I catch them, they've done it. They 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 put, they created development based upon our code, uh, with this policy. It it becomes development. Result of them putting develop, if somebody else built a house without, we make them get a coastal development permit, because that's development.
This is. Let me help a little bit. If somebody did an illegal construction that we could not permit, yeah, um, we would not make them go through the permit process. We would find them in violation and we would make them abate that. Um, and I think that might be the case here.
You would make them take it down?
Correct. If there was a case where it was an illegal construction and it could not be permitted, it would need to come down.
Yeah, that city's never done that. I've never seen the city make somebody tear something down. I'm just trying to figure out, look, guys.
I've done it plenty of times, actually.
Yeah, well, I haven't, all right. And I get the, what I'm trying to do is figure out if we're going to put this policy out there and we're going to send something to the community that says you can't do this, okay? Simply saying you can't do it won't have a whole bunch of impact. If the deal says I catch you doing this and we can define that as development and now you get a coast, you need to get a coastal development permit and that's going to cost you two grand. Now I got something is going to get their attention. That's all I'm trying to do.
Well, I I think. I'm sorry.
I go, go ahead. I was going to suggest that we, uh, since we have to bring this to the council that we 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 bring an action item to the council, but I don't think a code violation or a violation of this policy has anything to do with applying for a coastal development permit.
That's development, isn't it?
I I think the issue here, though, is if it were development that had the possibility of being permitted, then definitely, yes, a coastal development permit would be the the proper path. Uh, but the policy as written does not give the 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 property owner the ability to ever get this permitted. So the only advantage of a coastal development permit would be to remedy the situation. Like for, as I was mentioning, if if they sprayed something in Esha, we definitely would want to make certain that the Esha habitat is restored, uh, because there's a restoration component. Uh, so the the deterrent here is that if somebody were to do this, Doug would go out there or demand its removal, cite them and each day that it's not removed, uh, they'd be subject to another site or that the second and third time, of course, it it ramps up.
What's it ramp, what's it ramp up to?
I think we should ask, I think we should add to the motion that the city attorney comes back at when this comes to city council with options on on penalties for violating this policy.
And I don't argue, Mikey, all I'm trying to do is say that, you know, one of my concerns is we get these positions without any enforcement. And I'm just trying, you know, I mean, I I just like to see as we, as the staff reports come out and somebody says, here's what I want to do. Somewhere in that staff report is some statement that says, here's how we're going to make sure we can actually make this work. Because we do this and we don't do any, there's no, no penalty, so people, you know.
So we can, uh, council members, uh, and Councilmember Pearson. And so what we can do is definitely, as you request, ask for options and we'll look and see if those options modify uh, item four on the draft policy. Item four on the draft policy makes the policy subject to our city's administration administrative citation procedure. Uh, so we could talk to the city attorneys about that and seeing how that could change.
Okay, Mikey, I'll I'll agree with you, bringing it back, but I want, look, guys, if we're not going to, if we're not going to enforce this stuff, if we're not going to have a penalty for people who, I mean, I, look, if I see my neighbor doing pesticides in front of my house or front of their house, who, do I call up? How do I do that? Okay.
And that would be filing a complaint, so.
And do I have to give my name when I do that?
And at present, that's, that's another issue here. So council policy forty three or forty two, I'm sorry if I.
Forty three, I I know it's forty three, right?
Forty three. It requires, unless it could be demonstrated that it's a health and safety issue. Oh, those health and safety issues don't need to have a a full form filled out.
Is this, is this a health and safety issue?
If the council determines that that's the case.
What's your, what's your opinion?
Uh, this would, in my opinion, it's always dangerous, but I would say that this could be a safety issue for wildlife.
Okay, cool. All right, Mikey, I'll let it go. Let's bring it back to the city council. I agree with you. Let's, uh, have, when it comes back, if we could also have something from our legal staff that says, here's how we're going to enforce this. And then some discussion talking about, you know, what the penalties are or how this thing is going to be uh, implemented so that we've got some ability to actually get something done with this one. I know that, I know that makes sense, but I'm with you.
And yeah, I agree. And and the thing I would add, just in conversation, is that we're going to need to do some education and outreach to the public on this. And obviously, um, the the poison control or pest control industry that comes into our town. The one thing I've noticed is I've gone after a lot of people about this already is there's bait traps that look, I almost identical to the ones that have poison in them as the ones that are traps, those big hotels. I got fooled by a couple that were actually snap trap hotels. So it's going to take a little education, but you know, that's part of what we're doing here.
I I have no idea, you know, I walk around mail as much I hike, you know, part, there, there must be more pest control trucks roaming around that I can shake a stick at with. And I have no idea how you're going to, I don't think we even know who they all are. And so I have no idea how you're going to, uh, is our plan to contact them? To tell them they can't do this anymore, if that's the case, how are you going to do that without having some kind of a a business license permit for the city? I mean, we just, look, if we're going to do it, we ought to think about a way to get it done. So we've got it, it's tight and we make sure it works and we can get this one completed and move on to the next one. That's all I'm trying to do.
We can identify the the major providers in town and and notify them. I know that won't catch all of them, but I think that would go a long way.
If you can do that, uh, go ahead, I have a problem with that.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Can we have roll call on it, please?
Just for clarification, um, are the other items that were brought forward part of your formal motion or just the first one that you accepted as an amendment?
At least my understanding is the motion says we want to bring this to the city council approving the 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 policy. We want the legal department to come up with some at least high level argument that says how we're going to defend this if it goes forward. And we want to have some discussion at the city council level regarding either penalties or enforcement of how we make sure this thing works.
I would clarify that last part to say have staff bring forward how that might work as well, so that we can discuss it.
I got no problem with that. I I would agree with it, Mikey, just add.
Okay, thank you. Um, council member, you're in?
Yes.
Councilmember Pearson.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you very much. We are now at item three C. Zoning text amendment number two, one dash oh, oh, five, amended Malibu Municipal Code, chapter seventeen dash six, eight. Temporary use permits. Can we have a report on that, please?
Yes, if I may have the next slide, please. So, uh, last December, the council directed staff uh, to initiate essentially a Z T A to work on a potential update to the city's temporary use permit ordinance. And some of the topics that were discussed were to define what is considered a temporary event. And then also look at series of events. I may have the next slide, please. So the goal of this Z T A is to amend a particular section of the city's temporary use permit ordinance to clarify, and I'll go into more detail in a bit about event timelines. And also to address potential modifications to the permitting process for a community sponsored art related events in public spaces. And that, you know, kind of the genesis, uh, of the Z T A, for example, would be the amount of effort that goes into permitting the art. I forget if it's called the Art Walk or it's an art exhibit that takes place in Legacy Park. There's usually about twenty artists that show up. Um, however, the way that our codes are written at present, uh, those, you know, something with non amplified music and, you know, twenty folks showing up is treated the same as an event that has amplified music. Fifteen thousand people showing up and, uh, you know, know what I'm thinking of is Ride to the Flags. Or maybe it's five thousand, but we get a large group, it packs legacy, it packs Bluffs Park. Uh, the point is whether or not your event is very small or very large with, like I said, traffic impacts, uh, need for sheriffs, um, because of, um, beer gardens and loud music and all, uh, it's all treated the same. Next slide, please. So to talk about the timeframe for for temporary events, the way the code reads right now is that a temporary event, this is the one event says can last up to fourteen consecutive days. And so when looking at this, uh, one of the 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 issues that comes up for staff is we don't, the way our code is written, it it can be looked at and in by the letter of the law that the the permit is good for a fourteen day window, however you choose to use it in there. Um, the concern then becomes staff is exercising discretion in trying to figure out if if they hold a series of things within that fourteen days, is that still one event? Or can we say that there's a break because this events of, you know, this day is a bit different from the day over at the end or there's a break in between? The code doesn't address, uh, that particular issue. And so one of the things we're looking at is to tighten it up so that it's very clear and we can achieve the goals and, you know, some of the concerns that have been raised by the community. So I'd like to tighten that up so that if somebody does apply for permits like that, we're able to say, no, I'm sorry, you're but you know, you're not consistent with this section of the code. And so, uh, sometimes there are uses that do need more than fourteen days. And some of those uses which are currently in our temporary use permit uh, ordinance are sales offices, uh, construction staging and parking, and also our T U P ordinance allows for the the temporary placement of wireless facilities. And right now, when you look at the ordinance, it, once again, it goes back to the event shall last fourteen days. But it doesn't say that the construction sales office, uh, shall last sixty days or ninety days. Um, so it's, we, we have, for example, there was the temporary, or excuse me, the prefabricated home, uh, demo, uh, building that was placed next to city hall, to the west of city hall. We processed that with a temporary use permit and I want to say we did a few of them uh, because of the fact that the the fourteen days, you know, we we want the conservative route. But is the placement of a sales office, construction staging, parking really an event? Um, that, once again, is something that our legal staff has not been able to uh, say definitively based on how the code is written. I think we can all agree that it makes sense that a construction staging lot is not an event. Um, it's going to be tied, its length of time is probably tied to the construction project that it's um, being that the construction project that was permitted, that it's being associated with. And the sales office, for example, if you have, um, say you, what comes to mind are the condos that are on Carbon Beach. There's eight condos there, they had a trailer in the parking lot that was the sales office, uh, at one point for the real estate agents. Uh, to limit that to fourteen days is a bit silly. Uh, because, you know, that probably should stay there as long as it takes to sell the, or, you know, the the units off. And then lastly, of course, uh, as I mentioned, we'll talk a little bit more about, uh, community sponsored art events. If I, uh, may have the next slide, please. So some of the things that, uh, staff is recommending, some little tweaks to the definition of a temporary event is that the event must, we'd like it to say that the event must take place on consecutive days to be considered one event. So rather than saying the event can't last more than fourteen consecutive days, we'd like to make it clear that an event starts and stops and it it happens on consecutive days. And if there's a break, then it's not one event. And something that staff was considering or proposing, uh, for ZoRaces's consideration was when you have something that's a non-event, like the construction yard or the sales office, uh, perhaps set a multi-year limit to it, or it could be a one year, or it could even just be tied to the length for the the project. Um, so if it's a, if it's a construction yard that was, um, you know, part of an approved coastal development permit or A P R, uh, they could have, or excuse me, if the the building is a, you know, the the building is approved through the permitting process of the city, the construction yard could be reviewed with a temporary use permit and it could remain in place uh, while the construction takes place. Uh, those are some things we could talk about. Uh, next slide, please. And then getting to community sponsored art events. So i- i- if one thing that staff would like to propose, if ZoRaces, if the subcommittees, uh, in favor of recommending, uh, staff work on a bit more is looking to see if we can make a carve out for community, uh, community sponsored art events. And so perhaps make that a different permitting process. And what staff would check for is, does the event provide a community benefit? Would it have minimal public impacts? And by that, what we mean is that less than a hundred attendees. Uh, is it situated in public areas that are designed for such uses? So this would be, say, uh, you know, Legacy Park, Bluffs Park. And you are, i- is this taking place in an area where it's designed to have people there anyway? And this many, uh, attendees doesn't overburden what that site already can handle and accommodate. And then perhaps, you know, in order to qualify to go through this type of review process, it would be, you know, events that are, as I, we mentioned in the staff report, um, these cultural, community, educational art pro, um, uh, type events that are operated by, uh, nonprofit organizations. Because what we're finding is that while we have a mechanism to waive the T U P fee, the way that you, the permitting process works now is we can waive that fee, but we still expect these folks to provide the city with a radius map and mailing labels for five hundred feet. And often, uh, as in the case, I believe of the art event that takes place here in Legacy Park, um, that's under a thousand dollars maybe, while that, you know, may not sound too bad. But it is, if you have an event where you're not charging anybody anything to to be part of it and it's, or if you are, you may raise a couple hundred bucks, um, for some, uh, nonprofit. And so we end up taking all that money, they end, not we as a city, but, uh, they end up using all that money to pay for mailing labels. Uh, so that was something that we were considering is perhaps, because once again, these are events taking place in a public space, uh, and, you know, that perhaps these types of events would not require a, um, a public notice. Uh, next slide, please. So I was, as I was mentioning, uh, perhaps a solution to this is that, um, staff, we recognize the concern that if we just provide an exemption that says you don't need to talk to the city and he can just go do these events without any sort. and he can just go do these events without any sort of permit, the question becomes, how do we actually verify that these, that the events that are occurring are actually being done so properly? So one of the proposals we have as a staff is that we could utilize our over the counter permit process. And we could offer a free permit because it could essentially be a form with checkboxes where we look to see if, as I mentioned, it's a public space, it's large enough to accommodate the event, so we're, you know, we're not talking about putting a hundred people in, into a little room that's, you know, only designed for twenty people. We want to make sure, once again, Legacy Park comes to mind. A hundred people in Legacy Park really isn't an issue, it's very large. I've talked to our community services staff, they feel that in the the city facilities, a hundred people or less is not an issue. But we would check to make certain too about the hours of operation. I highly doubt someone would run an art show at midnight at Legacy Park. But once again, we'd look to make sure it's during the daylight hours, make certain that there's adequate parking, adequate access. Of course, not to overburden the event site. We'd look to see if it looks like there's a potential to be a public nuisance, check to see the group that's holding it, is it a nonprofit? And then also make certain that no reviews are required by any of the county's departments such as environmental health for wastewater or food. And then also the sheriff's department or the fire department. Next slide, please. So once again, we just ask that in our conversation today, we look at some considerations for these types of events. Perhaps some of the triggers could be attendance. Like, if it would be a bit difficult to look at proceeds to make sure that, to look at, you know, event ca, excuse me, the amount of money that they could bring in versus permit costs, i- if if ZoRaces wishes us to look into that, we'll be glad to do it. Would, you know, are there issues if these events are charging admission fees? And then also the timing of the event, high traffics, times of the year, different seasons. Next slide, please. Based on our discussion today, staff would prepare the amendment for this and present it to the planning commission for a recommendation to the city council. Then if this is adopted by the city council, then we would bring it back for a second reading. I think if, I don't believe that given where we are in the time of year, this is something we'll have in place for this summer. But we would be able to get this, I would think, or by fall and definitely in place for the upcoming year. I'm available for any questions on this, thank you.
Thank you, Richard, appreciate that. Let's go to public speakers.
Thank you, we do have several people signed up to speak. And if anyone is in the meeting and has not signed up but would like to speak on the item, if you use the raise hand signal at the bottom of your screen, we'll circle back to you at the end. To begin with, we'll start with Barry Haldeman, followed by Daria Hodko, then Steve Talal. So first up would be Barry Haldeman.
Okay, can you hear me?
I can hear you, Barry.
Great. I'm a member of the Malibu Film Society Board of Directors, as well of, on the Malibu Arts Commission, as well as on the Chamber of Commerce Arts Commission that's just been started. I'm talking about the Malibu Film Society today. We started this thirteen years ago, and Scott Talal, who speak later, really has helped us grow this into a major event for Malibu. We have, in Malibu, we've had like sixty screenings at least a year, people are very happy. The studios have found us as a must stop spot because per capita, most Academy members that vote in Los Angeles live in Malibu. And it's the biggest concentration. And for years, the city has basically said we could go on and do our operation without any requirement of permits or anything else. And then as a matter of fact, they actually gave us grants the first two years till we got started. We are a nonprofit, by the way. We brought a lot of joy to Malibu, so. But all of a sudden, the city has taken the position that we can't do it anymore. And the, the Malibu Pacific Church has been kind enough to invite us to have our screenings there to further unify the community, and they've said no. Now, we believe that that's wrong, and it's driven us out of Malibu and may, may actually destroy the society. Because we're, we're screening outside of Malibu in Palisades and in Agoura, but people don't want to drive that at night. So we're asking for the following. We would like the city to interpret seventeen sixty-eight point oh four oh, which is a temporary use permit F, as allowing us to, to hold an event in, in auditoriums or the kind of places that are appropriate and waive any permit requirements. In the alternative, we would like to have a special exception like the farmers market did in the code that would allow us to do so. And we can, I can get into more details, my time is running out, or Scott can, but we're available today to speak to the committee about amending it. We do have more than a hundred people that attend. And so we need to tinker with that, but I thank Richard, I think you guys are on the right track in terms of how you make an exception. We just have to tinker with the process, but for the moment, we would like to go back to the original interpretation, which is, they just said, fine, as long as you're in an auditorium and a place that's appropriate and there's enough parking, you're cool. So that's, that's where we are, and I'm available during this discussion to talk about anything.
Thank you, Barry. Who's next?
Our next speaker is Daria Hodko.
Hi, Daria, it looks like you need to unmute.
Sorry.
Oh, you got it.
So I am the Chair of the Chambers Arts Committee. And I would like to just echo what Barry was saying in terms of having more arts available to the Malibu community and also providing local artists with more opportunities to showcase their artworks, showcase their, if they're in the performing arts. I strongly support relaxing the requirements for the temporary use permits or waiving them if it's in the appropriate venue. I, I believe that that could really tremendously help us, and we would appreciate having you guys make it more feasible for us to, to do so. Because I strongly feel that the committee's mission and also the Film Society's mission is to be able to bring more arts into Malibu. And given that there is so much local talent, I, I think that this just makes sense to make it easier, more feasible to do.
Thank you, Daria.
Thank you, our next speaker will be Scott Talal.
Okay. Hi, Scott.
Guys.
I, I can hear you.
Okay, just to follow up on several things here. First of all, just to clarify one of the points that Barry Haldeman made, we will not be destroyed as an organization, to be honest. Moving to Pacific Palisades and Agoura Hills has actually helped the Film Society grow beyond what it is now, and we have so much support from those communities that we will continue to operate very successfully now and into the future. The only question is whether or not we will be allowed to operate in Malibu. And on that basis, I do favor passage of the amendment to the code. Which, by the way, at the beginning of your presentation, Richard said oh sixty, which I believe refers to the short term rental ordinance, it said oh sixty instead of oh forty. We occasionally have over a hundred people, but it's important to note that our typical event is under a hundred, so as the code is currently proposed, that would be fine for us. We do have occasionally big stars coming, for instance, this Saturday, we have Malcolm McDowell coming out for the fiftieth anniversary of A Clockwork Orange. We'd have well over a hundred people for that, it just won't be happening in Malibu. One of the questions I have about this ordinance that perhaps Richard could address is it all talks about public space, it does not talk about private space such as houses of worship. Separately, one thing that's important to bring out is that the current TUP process requires thirty-five days advance noticing, which basically means that if we continue to want to do special events like Rams playing in the Super Bowl, Dodgers playing in the World Series, Lakers playing in the NBA Championships, we'll never be able to do it because we don't know thirty-five days in advance that they will be in those games. So it really is important for us to be able to have permission to do these events in one form or another with less than thirty-five days notice. We do have, at this point, about a hundred films that we show a year, however, forty of those are online. The others, sixty films are held at various locations. Netflix is always going to want to show its own films down at the Bay Theater in the Palisades, so we're talking about at present about fifty films, and we do have a lot of double feature nights, we even had a triple feature night at one point. So it's not like we're talking about a significant number of consecutive uses. This happens all year long, it's all indoors. If we go to Malibu Pacific Church, we will almost never use up more than half of their existing parking lot. We almost never have amplified sound outdoors with the possible exception of a dinner and a movie night where we want people to be entertained while they're having dinner before the movie. And in the years that we've been operating since two thousand nine at the Malibu Jewish Center, I don't believe we have generated a single complaint from the community.
All right, thank you, Scott.
Our next speaker will be John Maza, followed by Barbara Freyend, and then Lottie Sharon.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you, John.
Okay, I, I don't mean to be a buzzkill, I was on the Arts Task Force, I'm on the Board of Directors of the Malibu Arts Foundation. My mother was a professional artist, I'm all for artists. What we have to look at here is, we have a absolutely awful record of big events with TUPs being followed. We have, in the city's lumberyard, we've had two events in the last four months. There were over four hundred, over two hundred and fifty people that advertised they were in Legacy Park, no they weren't. And they were internationally advertised, bars, music, everything else. And we, we basically slapping the hand. We need to consider the citizens, we went through this big fight over Malibu High School and their lights. When one of our city councilmen proposed opening it up to, up to two hundred and three events a year. All of which could be called art. Okay? And the neighborhood went crazy. Most of the churches, if not all, are surrounded by houses. Some of the public facilities, for example, the park at Heather Cliff is surrounded by many, many houses. So we have to have a situation where we can control this and the neighbors will know. We, we went through a huge problem with the Malibu film ordinance, because we didn't restrict anything until we brought the ordinance in and said, oh, you gotta tell the neighbors you're gonna have a film crew show up for thirty days and trample your neighborhood. So this needs to be absolutely controlled, and we need to define what a public space is. We don't have a definition of a public space. And we don't have, we don't have much of an institutional zoning code, most of our parks are residentially zoned. So there's a lot of work to be done before you can say, gee, come on in and have an event. And don't bother telling the neighbors, and we don't really have a definition, and we don't have any way to following up when a car show goes from twenty to three thousand, or et cetera. And we have no way of checking right now who's a five oh one C three and who's a five oh one C four. There's a lot, a lot of problems with this, but it's mainly considering what it does to neighborhoods, we're a residential city. We can, we can define certain areas, City Hall, for example, where we have enough parking. Very few of the other places do. When you throw a Rams game on Malibu Canyon Road, you have a parking problem, you have a traffic problem, so you have to consider all of this, thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, Mr. Maza, our next speaker is Barbara Freyend.
Hi, Barbara.
Hi, it's so nice to be with you all again. And first, I just want to thank the city and the staff, Richard, you and your group. Jessica, you have been extraordinarily empathetic and compassionate to the Malibu Art Association as we try to get our Legacy Park Art in the Park series up and running again. They have been met with extreme enthusiasm from the community. In fact, people have asked us every time we're there, oh, are you going to be here every Sunday? And of course, we're not, because Legacy and some of the other parks are limited to that six times a year issue. But with that said, there are several parks available to our art groups. And as you all know, I represent two, and so, and Richard is very familiar with all of the applications coming in now. Malibu Art Association has requested for five dates in Legacy Park, because I guess another group has already asked for number six. And the Allied Artists of the Santa Monica Mountains and Seashore were going to request Legacy Park, but didn't want to intrude then on Malibu Art Association losing one of their five. So they've now applied to go to Bluffs Park, and they're very, very excited about it. So there are a number of different groups, two of which I've just mentioned that I am a member of, and, and both of whom donate a substantial portion of their proceeds from the art sales to benefit their, their host organizations. And so Malibu Art Association donates to the Malibu High School Scholarship Fund. Allied Artists of the Santa Monica Mountains donates actually an even greater percentage to preserving parks and outdoor spaces and conservation groups. And so in their application, they're, they're offering to, to donate those to Malibu City proper to help with the maintenance and preservation of their own parks. And they are small nonprofit organizations, and so I am wildly appreciative of the staff's proposal to amend the TUP for people that are nonprofit organizations that do benefit the community, because I think these two art groups that have been in existence for, you know, twenty, thirty years now, painting and preserving this beautiful area do actually, you know, spread not only beauty to the person that, that purchases their paintings, but also then contributes to preservation of those wonderful spaces that we have here. So, you know, when I had signed up to speak, it was more just to answer any questions that you all have had with regards to our experience last year and now this year with going through this TUP process. And since it is the same, essentially the same art event each time we do it, no food, you know, no tents, no impact on anything, no music, no speakers or any of that, it just seems like it's an extraordinary burden on your staff to have to go through notifying the community that, hey, we're having an art show on the first Sunday of every month, you know, whatever. Oops, I'm running.
Thank you, we are at time. Our next speaker is Lottie Sharon, followed by Eduardo del Senori.
Hi there, can you hear me? Hello?
That's a lot of.
Oh.
Sorry, it's muted, yep.
Okay, yeah, I, I just wanted to speak on behalf of the Arts Commission, the Malibu Arts Commission. It is a, you know, as you know, a city commission, and we're hoping that you can also relax the TUP for us. We never charge fees for our events, we typically have under a hundred people attending. The noise is, we don't have loud, really loud things. Typically, we're in public spaces. Even our art show events at City Hall are under 100 and, you know, not loud. Anyway, I'm hoping that you can waive a 14-day requirement on that. We are also, of course, in support of the Art Association, which we have discussed at the meeting and proposed that they do not have to pay any fees as well as the Film Society. I think everyone else has said pretty much what I would, what I would add. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Lottie. Thanks for speaking.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Eduardo del Signori, followed by Barbara Brederlin.
Hello. Can you hear me?
I can hear you, Eduardo.
Hi. Well, thanks for this opportunity. I've been focusing the work of a foundation that is formed by artists, specifically musicians, to promote the arts through creating platforms of concerts that include dance, poetry, and in some cases, artists that do painting while the concert is going. I, I support, I totally support that. Any, any motion that could benefit the expansion of the arts in the city of Malibu, I think the city will benefit greatly with it. A few years ago, I was, I, I was born in Uruguay and I was visiting my hometown, Montevideo, the capital city. I was walking by the ruins of a neighborhood that was destroyed by the military dictatorship at the time. And it was a neighborhood that housed the Afro-Uruguayan population of the people that really carry folklore and the traditional music from Uruguay. And, and one of the walls was written, "The country that doesn't invest in the arts is doomed to mediocrity." And I really believe that to be true. And I know that there are many things, many barriers, many obstacles to make it happen, but it's totally worth it. I just, it's, it's, it's a heartfelt thing that I, that I work with passion. And our first concert of a series that I presented is happening on the 23rd at the City Hall to benefit the Malibu High School Orchestra. And yesterday, I sent the application for another event to benefit Ukraine that is gonna happen on May 21st at the church, Malibu United Methodist Church. That's my opinion. I support everything that has been presented by Barry and Scott and everybody that has spoken in support of this. So whatever we can do to make it easier, I support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Eduardo. Who do we have next?
Sorry, I was muted. Our next speaker is Barbara Brederlin and she will be followed by John Joan Hannison.
Okay.
Hi, can you hear me?
I can hear you, Barbara.
Thank you so much. First of all, I just want to say on behalf of the chamber that we are very excited that you're inventing some of these requirements. They've been very, very difficult. If there's one sector in Malibu that seems to suffer the most is all the arts. And I'm really happy about that. We also really want to support the Malibu Film Society being able to host their event at Malibu Pacific Church. They are so kind and offering and beautiful enclosed auditorium. I can't understand a reason why not. I also want to mention that the arts are suffering in Malibu. We don't see a lot of it because, like we do in some of the other cities, like Beverly Hills and Santa Monica, because the shopping centers are afraid to use up their six TUPs just to have a, an artist perform for a little while in their center. And they're kind of scared away. And I think that if you guys could be so kind as to lean on the side of, against caution, you know, to, to, to be a little more daring and let artists perform without all the requirements and without them having to file one of their six TUPs so that we can see more art on the street and more art on the, in the centers as long as it's, you know, approved by the property owner. And that's all we have to say and thank you very much.
Thank you, Barbara.
Next, our final speaker who has signed up is John Joe Hannison.
Okay, great.
Hi, everyone.
Hey, John.
Hey, you know, it really interests me how you were so quick to shut down the Film Society after supporting us and having us operate in the city for 12, 13 years. And for, I, I don't think you've really even figured out why you did that. But why are you on the wrong side of the fence? The City Council and Planning Commission should be on our side of the fence, supporting the community arts. We're a community that's based on art. We're filled with artists. We have movies in the Film Society, you know? You should be like doing what you can, not to screen us and say, no, we can't do this and we can't do that, but be more supportive of the art community. Because that's what Malibu is. It's, it's a community full of artists. And on behalf of the Film Society that I've been on the board with now for 10 years, I can't believe that we've had to go through this. And I appreciate the work that you're doing right now to, you know, put something together so we can start showing movies in Malibu. We don't even have a movie theater. Anyway, keep up the good work, guys, but thank you very much.
Thank you, John.
Thank you. If we could see the full screen briefly to see if anyone else has indicated an intent to speak. Otherwise, I believe that concludes public speakers.
All right. Thank you, Rebecca. We are back here. Steve, thoughts?
Yeah, I'm confused. I'm not sure what the heck we're voting on today or we're considering today. Richard took us through a presentation that basically talked about events taking place on Malibu public property, Legacy Park, Bluff Park, maybe City Hall. We've gone from there to events in shopping centers, events at the church, and just all the people from the Malibu Film Society, nobody shuts you down. When Scott Talal called me about the fact that they wanted to do an event at the church, I, I said, go get a temporary use permit. You could have done that. You could have had the event. So it wasn't like they, nobody said you can't do anything. It said you just gotta follow the rules that everybody else had to follow to, to, to deal with that stuff. So here's my concern. With temporary use permits, the original, at least my understanding, the original construction of this, this code was to allow the events in locations where they weren't necessarily designed to host an event like that. So, you know, whatever, the shopping center isn't designed to host a farmer's market. So you gotta get a temporary use permit to, to change the use of that. The other thing the temporary use permit code does is protect the residents. Right? It makes sure that if there's a concern in terms of what's gonna take place, the residents have a chance to raise their hands and make their argument to either modify the event, stop the event, whatever the right words are, to make sure that the quality of their life isn't really impacted by something else going on. And I'm concerned that the way we got, or the way we're talking about this, we're going to change the rules and, and, you know, not protect the quality of life of the residents. Now, when it comes, look, in terms of an art event at Legacy Park or an art show at Bluff Park or an art show at City Hall, I got no problems with those things. If we can figure out a way to crank those up and let people do that without a whole bunch of, you know, going through nine miles of barboard and broken glass, I don't have a problem with that at all. Those things are, I think they are, and I've, you know, I've been to the events at Legacy Park. It's, it's been relatively small. I think the people there do a nice job. They take care of the place. So I don't have a problem with that. Going above and beyond that, where I'm gonna start allowing people to do events, well, I, I, you know, I mean, I go through things, saying what, what, what kind of a, if I read the staff report, the staff report says stuff that hasn't been presented to us so far. You know, it's cultural events and other events. And, and I'm not sure who's gonna define what all those things are to get an over the counter permit. There's a whole bunch of stuff when you go through the over the counter permit. Someone's got to decide, is there adequate access? Will it overburden the site? Will the event have adequate parking? And I'm just wondering, who are the people at the counter? They're gonna know all that stuff to be able to issue an over the counter permit. I mean, we got a lot of staff that's changing. And unless somebody's been here for a while, they don't know the city. They don't know the locations. So as you, as you expand this stuff, I mean, we got someone making the decision that they may not be qualified to make. It talks about the, the staff report talks about having events like, I forget what the heck it was, educational, cultural and public art events. I mean, who's gonna make the decision of what those are? I mean, it's back to the conversation we had yesterday, Mikey, in the meeting regarding our code. I mean, is we, is we have, is we put stuff in our code that is vague, right? That is ambiguous. It allows, what it does, it forces different people to make decisions of what that means. And as a result of that, we get all sorts of stuff, right? Everybody, depending who's making the decision, comes up with a different answer and you never know what the hell you're gonna get. So I, I, you know, I'm not sure how to go about this, but I, I don't have a problem with allowing the art shows to take place at Legacy Park, Bluff Park and City Hall and doing that in such a way that we can reduce, reduce the burden they have to have to do that stuff. But I'm not, you know, I, I'm not in favor of changing all the rules for the temporary use permit and not having some portion of that go back to the residents where it's gonna take place and make sure they're not getting injured by that process. So that's, I mean, I can take you more, but that's sort of an overview where I am.
Okay, thank you. I don't know that we're gonna, Steve and I are gonna see this quite the same way, but I'll give it a go and maybe we do. I, I, I agree. A couple of things have bothered me for a lot of years. And that's what I call small non-impact events, which I think Steve and I agree on. You go down to that art event, Legacy Park, and there's just, there's just no impact. It just isn't as far as I can see, especially because we authorized plenty of parking across the street, even if it was needed for the farmer's market. I do have a quick question, though. Did I, and maybe, I don't understand this, is our public parks also limited to only six events a year?
Yes, they are.
So we, we buy and develop a public space for the public and then we limit cultural arts events in them.
So the, the TUP ordinance, when you look at what it applies to, it, it, it doesn't have an exemption for city-owned properties. And then when you talk about temporary uses requiring a permit, section G says art, cultural and educational exhibits and displays essentially require a permit. Our, our code does not give the city the ability to exempt itself. And, and I, and that's kind of what we're trying to get at here this evening, or this afternoon, getting into the evening.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to clarify that for myself and everyone listening. So I think public spaces owned by the public should be exactly where we're trying to promote events. That makes sense to me. They are public spaces. They generally have some sort of parking. And they were, they're owned by the public. So to me, I think the City Council should have a discussion about that. I would have zero issue if there's an art event every weekend of the summer at Legacy Park. I don't, you know, that wouldn't upset me or hurt me or anything like that, especially because the events I've seen are literally, the impact is negligible at best. I also think as part of that, it's become very noticeable to me for quite a while that like an art event, the ability to a series, it's, it's just silly that it doesn't exist, that you can't do an art series during the summer, three or four events or whatever it is. And that you, you can't apply for a TUP for that. And I think, I think there should be a threshold. I think there should be what we call basically low or non-impact events. That's an over a counter permit. And there should be ability to do a series that, or at least apply for it, that is the standard probably TUP that we run now, that you have to check a lot more boxes. Obviously, you don't, you know, wanna, you know, have a series of chili cook-offs every weekend on some sort of temp, you know, some sort of easy to get permit. That would make no sense at all. I don't think that's the point. But the idea that there can't be a series put on by the art commissions, these nonprofits, to me, I, I don't understand that. I think, I think that should be absolutely allowed. Of course, I, I, that doesn't bother me at all. I think there's other issues to unpack as to the, I want to talk about the Film Society. If there's a space in Malibu that is built, permitted and designed to hold X number of people, such as an auditorium of some sort, with the parking to hold it, what's the difference if we're showing a movie in there? I'm baffled by that. We're not talking about people showing up in monster trucks and blasting music. We're talking about people going, it could be church, it could be a, a movie, it could be, I don't know, it could be a prayer session. I don't know what it is. It could be Alcoholics Anonymous. I don't know what it is. But if the, we've built and permitted a building for events, whether it's City Hall or a church, I don't understand why there's an issue with there being, if the parking's available and it fits in the parking, I don't have an issue with it. And, you know, it's, and I don't know about a one-off or anything, but when it comes to the Film Society, I don't mind if it's a series. I don't, I don't see the impact. Now, if there is an impact I'm unaware of, of course that matters. Absolutely, of course that matters. And something like a movie series going, you know, during whatever the season is for that, yeah, that's a permit that probably would make sense to go before the Planning Commission to discuss. I, I can understand that. Because, but if there's no impact, it doesn't bother me at all. Hang on a second. I got tons more notes here. I think on the low-impact type of events I discussed initially, over the counter, you know, you know, hopefully maybe it doesn't take that long to get a couple of weeks at the most, or maybe over the counter and you're done. I don't know quite the answer to that. If it was a bigger series, like a, a music series that maybe had some sort of impact, and I don't know how to define that yet, that's something we'd have to work on. Yeah, maybe that's, you know, something you need to plan ahead for, obviously. So I'm thinking one, one event that's one of the most popular in Malibu that everyone loves is the music of trankas during the summer. I mean, it is a gathering place for Malibu. People love it. I think events like that should be encouraged where they make sense. We have some of the most talented people on the planet here. I mean, just simply go to Malibu High to their, their talent event every year and it just fries your brain. If you've never been, make sure you go. It's just the talent is unbelievable. And it's in an appropriate place. It doesn't impact anyone. So I, I'm very much in favor of the City Council talking about that. The other, let me give you a second here. I mean, not having more than six arts events in a public park in Malibu is like saying you can play six soccer games there. I would say that soccer games have far more impact. So I'm just going back to that. I'm confused as to why that, why our code was written that way. I, I have no idea. why our code was written that way. I, I have no idea. There was other stuff that you brought up, Richard, recommendations. I'd like to go back up on the screen because I don't, I couldn't, it was a lot of people talking about a lot of things. It was hard for me to bring it all forward there. Uh, but those other things you were recommending, we clean up. And if you could bring back that, those recommendations, I'm feeling like I haven't really addressed some of them. And we're, we're talking about that.
Yeah, I think. So one of the items brought up, there you go, is talk about firming up consecutive days. And then the other item to discuss are, you know, our, our T U P ordinance talks about things that aren't events, like construction yards.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. So.
Sales offices.
Yeah, that's a good one. And I didn't even realize that was part of this. So here's my thought is, if you need extra space during any sort of construction project, that should be discussed as part of going through the planning commission.
Okay.
I mean, that to me just makes sense. Planning commission should look at the entire impact of a project, including any temporary buildings associated or parking lots, which I know, and parking plans are part of it. So I, I would think that would just be included, um, personally. And we sort of put that whole thing to bed at one time and, and vet everything. Am I missing something there?
So I guess my question to you would be, and we can look at, looking to see how we could draft something to that effect. Uh, but would you say, uh, if I understand you correctly, as part of the project review, if they would ask for the, the lot, in, in other words, the planning commission could grant them a temporary use permit to use the lot next door, uh, and just let the planning commission set the, the timeframe rather than ha- have it go through the, the T U P process?
I would think so. We might as well kill that two birds with one stone. I mean, it seems like, because that way they, the planning commission then can look at the entire impact of what's going on. Um, so it makes sense in my head. And then the other item, um, you had a, wait, and a, the consecutive event thing. Do we? Outside of construction type things or structure type things, do we have events take place that are more than two weeks long?
So i- it's not so much that the event itself is more than two weeks long. It's the question of, could I hold an event on Saturday and Sunday? Not do anything Monday and Friday, hold an event Saturday and Sunday and do that under one permit. And this is something that Joyce, when she was the director and Bonnie, uh, was the director. This is something that from looking through the notes that they, I want to say Bonnie actually brought an item, there's a race is looking for direction on this because what we've had happen is someone will do, for example, a Christmas ser- a, a Christmas wrapping paper event, Christmas events. It'll be wrapping paper, caroling, uh, you know, or like a winter, um, sales, uh, you know, like cookies and, and, and Christmasy kind of stuff. And it'll be on the shopping centers and they'll, they'll do it Saturday, Sunday, take a break, Saturday, Sunday of the following week. And the question is, can that be under one permit? Because it's a Christmas event and it's less than fourteen consecutive, i- it's within, it's, it doesn't span more than fourteen consecutive days.
It, in, in my mind, it goes back to, it's simply check the box under a series. So it's one group doing sort of one thing, whether art, music, you know, I don't know, juggling, I don't know what the heck it is, gift wrapping. Yes, we want to do an event series. It's going to be three weekends in December, or whatever it is. That's how I would handle it. So once again, we're putting it all into the sort of wrapping it up in one thing and taking care of it at, at one time and not taking more staff time and effort on, on events. So I would call that a series, just for ease of processing.
So if I, if I understand you correctly then, and if you like, we can go back to talking about, uh, your first point about the community spa- or I say community spaces, but you know, private property buildings that, uh, that do community events, but we can go back there. But on this point, uh, would it be fair to say then to kind of sum up what you yourself are saying? Uh, for permitting types, it's perhaps the low impact? That's, a- as you mentioned, the small-scale art nonprofit type events?
Right, well, I'm, I'm thinking of a couple of things too, and there's also a private property part of this as well. So I'm thinking of like, if you have a shopping center and you have a strolling guy playing a guitar, what is that? Now technically, you need a permit here. So no impact, maybe it's, you know, it's not a rock and roll band. To me, that should be, you know, why do we care if, if a local artist is able to go down to shopping center and play, you know, play a little bit of music every other weekend or something like that? You know, or maybe it's, you know, first Sundays of the month are, you know, a, a acoustic session for Malibu High kids or something like that. You know, I don't, I don't see why that, that's kind of to me, it's private property, but it's public space where the public's invited and it's open for the public to come. So that to me is the kind of places those events should be. It, it, you know, it's, there used to be a great night very often at, um, at, um, um, at, um, Sunset Restaurant, the local high school kids played there. It was amazing. It was fantastic. And you know, twenty or thirty of us would go listen to it. It was awesome. It was good for business for the restaurant. It was a win-win for the community. Those kids were getting practice playing in public. It was awesome. We have nothing like that now. Zero. And to me, we've just sort of, you know, unintentionally abandoned our art community on that. So the ability for, you know, like I said, at Trankis for these people to come down and play, they have the space? Great. I mean, to me, that's, that's what it's for. And, um, I'm sure, you know, there's other venues that might think the same way. Actually, I know there are. So that's what I think the city council should discuss. Was there anything else on your list you wanted to hear from us that we haven't touched on?
I know, I think you hit it. And if you like, uh, I think to go back to your first point, though, about the events, uh, like for example, the Film Society events that take place in public spaces like, uh, the churches, uh, the synagogue. The, the issue there is that a lot of these areas have conditional use permits. And when that conditional use permit was granted, it was through a public process, there was an expectation. Uh, the public, you know, they were there, they, they spoke up to that. And so we've been bound to enforce those conditional use permits. And so like, for example, with the Film Society, at the Malibu Jewish Center, what happened there was we received a, a complaint. And we looked at the conditional use permit, it, and it didn't call out that use. And so actually, as part of the conditional use permit, the Malibu Film Society now has a conditional use permit that allows for film events. So if the property owner allows it or want, you know, invites these types of events, since it's within the, the permitted, the, the list of uses that's been vetted and permitted, they wouldn't need a T U P to do that. They could just do it because they're operating under their permit. Um, but where the concern comes in is when, uh, you have events that could be in conflict with the permit for the building because either, uh, it's not addressed by the permit or it could be in violation of a condition of approval that was part of that C U P. So that is, um, you know, the, the concern when we say in public spaces, yes, if it's a, or excuse me, an auditorium, if the auditorium is contemplated to host, uh, events and that's how it's been operating, you know, you don't need to come to us for a permit. It's just when you're outside that conditional use permit, uh, because as Steve had mentioned, Councilman Reuring, sorry. Uh, as he mentioned, uh, it's a matter of the folks living around it and what expectation they had. So I hope, I hope that difference there, I hope that we explained it well for you.
That's fair, that's fair. So I, I suppose that that, I'm still not opposed to it, but I could see where there should be a process, a process for the public here. Um, I can, I can imagine that, yes. So that's, thank you for bringing that up about the expectations of the neighborhood. So.
Great. Mikey?
Yeah.
Uh, I, I, I don't want to interrupt you. You were on a roll there, so.
Um, well, I can come back. You can chime in now. That's fine.
I just, look, and I just want to make sure when this goes to the city council, there's a clear understanding that Mikey and I don't necessarily agree with one another.
I, I agree. There's needs to be that clearly defined.
Right. And I'll, and I'll tell you why, Mikey. I don't know how much time you spent at the Presbyterian Church. I don't know how much you know about that neighborhood, or what's around there, or how close the houses are, or what goes on there in terms of traffic. Uh, but you just blew that all the way. All right. I mean, Sunday mornings when they have church events there, they have to have, uh, rent a cops sitting on Malibu Canyon dealing with the traffic coming out of the church because it becomes very dangerous trying to get up and down Malibu Canyon. All right? Uh, and I don't know what, what an event is going to do to the houses that are very close to this thing. Look, what, what you're, and I, the problem is, you have just opened up a whole range of events, none of which are clearly defined. So I can't tell you what the hell you, you want to do or don't want to do. I, I don't ever, like I said, I don't have a problem with the art events at, at the, the look, uh, city parks. I don't have a problem with the Trankis deal. I think, you know, if we can figure out a way to put that in there. But to open this thing up to just anybody and everybody, uh, you know, look, you want a cultural event, I'll take, uh, you know, heavy metal band playing Ukrainian folk songs. Okay, that's a cultural event. And see what the hell that's going to do to the neighborhood. Uh, there's, there's a rule, there, there, there's a reason why the temporary use permits require some notice to the neighborhood, to the places around it. Uh, because we, our job is not to negatively impact the quality of life of the residents who are paying all our taxes, right? Or doing, doing all the stuff they're supposed to do, uh, to enjoy living in Malibu. And what, at least my, listening to what you're saying, you have opened that door to all sorts of stuff, none of which is defined. Okay, man, I don't, I don't know how broad your, your swath is going to be. And I don't know who's going to define whether this should be approved or not approved, right? I mean, who are these staff people that are working the counter that understand all this stuff? This is what we talked about yesterday, with the code becomes so ambiguous that everybody gets to interpret it their own way, and as a result, you have chaos. That's what we, we mentioned that, and you're just putting more of that chaos into the mix. So I, you know, I just don't think, I'm, if, if there's a way we could, if there's a way we can carve out certain art events, okay? And, and you know, the, the, again, events at the parks, events at City Hall, if you want to add the event at Trankis, I'm more than happy to that. But if that thing begins, you know, all of a sudden I can now do auditoriums, which may be in the middle of a neighborhood someplace, uh, without notifying the neighbors, I don't think that's a good thing for us to do.
Okay, I hear you. I don't know that we disagree, actually. Um, I agreed that, you know, if there's a C U P, that that has standing a hundred percent.
A C U P, it's a matter of, if I'm, if I'm going to go to the Presbyterian Church in Mal- the hill up here, I want the neighbors to know that some big event is going to take, because the houses are right next door.
And I, I said, I don't agree. I just, I don't disagree. I agree. If there's going to be an impact, that's the line. I totally agree.
Who's going to determine, based upon the way this thing is written, who's going to determine if there's an impact? The person at the counter?
I think, I think personally that if somebody, if we have a T U P that allows someone to apply for, let's say a film series somewhere, then it goes before the, I mean, the public has their chance to weigh in. So yes, I agree. If it's in a, a neighborhood and there might be an impact, I get that. I'm not asking for a neighborhood to be impacted.
Who's going to determine that? Because the way this thing is written, somebody at the counter makes that decision. Who is that person?
Well, it's not necessarily an over the counter permit. Maybe that is on the level of a chili cook-off and it needs to go before the planning commission. I mean, that would seem like it makes sense.
Then that's what, I mean, that's what I'd like to see. If we're going to go to the city council, I'd like to see a definition of those things that require a review by the, the staff in terms of standard T U P and those events that we're willing to let go with an over the counter permit, because I don't understand that right now.
Yeah, I, I, I agree. I mean, I think what low or non-impact events are very different from larger impact events. I fully agree.
I don't know, everybody's definitely, look, it's back to the thing we talked about yesterday. Everybody's got a different, diff- different definition of what a low or non-impact event is.
And that's our job.
Let's be clear. If we're going to go to the city council with the state, let's identify what it is we're talking about before we get there. That's what I'd like to do. So I don't understand it right now. It could be all, we're all over the map.
What would you like, and I think that, and that's exactly, I think, why we're here today, is what would you like to be? Or like, for example, we were saying, under, and we, staff came up, please understand, staff came up with the number of a, a hundred people in a public, in our, well, I could speak for our, our properties, because we, we know the size of them and we manage them as a city. So from talking to our, uh, uh, community services staff, what they told me is that a hundred people in Legacy Park, a hundred people at Bluffs, that, that's not going to create a, an, an impact there.
I said, I don't have a problem with an art event, okay? People drawing, have, having paintings, going to Legacy Park or going to Bluff Park or going to City Hall, them, you know, for presenting those things where the public can then look at, nor do I have a, a concern with something taking place up at Trankis during the summer because I think that's become a tradition up there, which I don't have a problem with. I just don't know where I go from there. But that to me is what we were trying to solve. In the course of trying to solve this thing, we've opened it up now. I've got traveling musicians in the shopping centers. I've got, we had a, a farmer's market in the, the village shopping center a couple of weeks ago, which I don't know how that got in there. I mean, the real problem is there is no control over these temporary use permits. People do whatever the heck they want to do, and we've got no ability or willingness to go back and check this stuff. So, and if we take, take away what little, little controls we have now, we're just opening the door for more stuff.
I think what we have to do is find that level where it goes from what we consider a non-impact event or so to an impact event, and that thus goes to the planning commission. I mean, that's, that to me makes sense, but what I'm asking for is if it does make sense, um, we should consider allowing a series or some such thing because, you know, it's decided that, okay, that does fit the neighborhood, it does fit our community.
Who's going to make that decision? You're asking an over a counter person to make that?
No, I'm talking about the planning commission, if it's an impact event.
Uh, but who's going to define, you, you're earlier spoken, you, you earlier spoke about having movies at the Presbyterian Church, and that wasn't going to be an impact event. It's going to be an impact event. I live near there. I know exactly what it's going to be.
I didn't say whether it was or wasn't.
Define that, because what we're doing is putting, we're, we're being vague, and vagueness causes problems down the road, and I like to, I like to avoid that. So if, if, look, if I had my druthers right now, I'm saying, art events at Legacy Park, art events at Bluff Park, art events at the City Hall and the Trankis thing, let's allow, figure out how we can allow them to do their, their events without a temporary use permit. Let's see what happens. If that thing works out well, we can go back next time and expand there a little bit more. But opening the door for everything, I just think is a bad mistake because it does begin to impact the quality of life of the residents, and that's what we're not supposed to be doing.
Okay, I do think there should be an over a counter permit, actually, so that we can track it and see if there is an event. I don't think we should just allow events to go on. We don't have a clue. Um, so even.
Now, Mikey, we're doing that. Then tell Richard to fix that, because that's what we're doing. And tell the compliance people to get out and look at it, because that's exactly what's going on.
Well, then that's, that's unrelated to what we're talking about. We're trying to fix a system that isn't working then. So, um, that's why we're here. As far as the ability for um, places where the public generally goes, like some of the shopping centers, if they want to do an art event or something like that, they should be able to apply for it. And, and I think now it's hard is that, you know, it's so limited that, you know, and it's so difficult, it's hard to do. And I think the city council should talk about that. Um, I heard you, what you said, Steve, that there was an event that went, a couple that went sideways. I didn't know about those. Yeah, we don't want that. I agree. If they're going sideways, that's not what we want at all. So I think our T U P system is maybe the white way. So I think our T U P system is maybe the right way to look at it, Steve, is that it's, it's failing the residents on multiple different directions, and we need to take a close look at it and try and make it reflect what the community wants.
The T U P system isn't failing the residents, our ability to, to make that system work is what's failing the residents. The T U Ps are doing the right thing. Having an event take place in an area that wasn't designed to do that is exactly what they're trying to do. And, and making sure the residents are aware of what's going on so they can comment before the event takes place is exactly the right thing to do, that, the T U P thing is working well, the thing is, we're not enforcing it, that's where the problem is.
So Steve and I aren't going to totally agree on this today, and that's okay, but, um, what, you, you have a, looks like you have a thought, Steve McClery?
Well, I, I just, uh, I, and again, I, I understand Councilmember Euring's concern about the, the enforcement, uh, and I'd be the first one to agree that we certainly do not catch everything out there. Um, but Richard, I do believe we have issued some citations this year uh, for, for folks who have held events without having proper T U P. So I, I just want it clear for the record that we, we do enforce those and we do respond to the complaints. Uh, I understand there may be concern about, you know, the level of what that's just being done. And of course, some of that comes down to staff resources, but, 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 uh, again, I don't want to, um, I don't want to take away from any of the points that were made here, because that was certainly not my intent. I just want to make it clear that we, we do go out, uh, when we do receive complaints and we have issued citations for when folks have held events without T U Ps.
So Richard, what are you going to go to the city council with in terms of what come out of this meeting today?
Well, that's, that's exactly what I was going to ask that question.
I, I would say, I would say the motion starts with Mike and Steve don't quite agree, e- except in some areas, but here's the things that were discussed, here's the things that were brought up for city council to discuss.
Well, are, are there some areas where we do have some agreement? Because it sounded like, and I heard Councilmember Euring state multiple times here, the, that he was supportive of perhaps looking at some different rules when you're looking at public places, I heard Legacy Park, Bluffs Park, um, situations like that, so I, I guess I would ask if there's any agreement between the two council members on, on that. At least we could get that clear in the staff report, and then maybe we could delay.
I, I am all in favor of making it easy for the art community to do events at Legacy Park, to do events at Bluff Park, to do events at City Hall, and I'm also all in favor of, of doing something to allow these summer concerts to take place up in Tranqus to continue, I'm, I'm, I'm on, I'll jump on that train any day of the week.
Okay, and Councilmember Pearson, do we have an agreement at least on that with Councilmember Euring?
Yeah, of course, yeah, naturally, I mean, the, the, you know, this has been something that's bothered me, as some of you on staff know, for quite a while. And then it was, you know, it was Barbara and the, and the artist, the landscape artist that really pushed me over the edge last summer. I thought, you know, and so that's what we're, we're agreeing on that, I mean, that was, you know, yeah, that was just unbelievable, those poor people, I felt so sorry for them. Um, so thank you for your patience, Barbara. And then, you know, it's, it, you start talking to the art community around here, and there's a lot of frustration. There's a huge amount of frustration, and I think we owe it to the citizens of Malibu on all sides of any issue to do with art events, film events, to bring this to city council and have a, or discussion, and I recognize why a lot of people will show up. But you know what, it's time, I mean, there's frustration in this town, and maybe on both sides, and, and that part of our job is to address the community's concerns, and we need to do that, and that's what I'm attempting to talk about here.
What is the frustration? I mean, if they want to get a temporary use permit, they can go today, apply for a temporary use permit and get one. So what, what are they frustrated with? Because they don't, they don't want to do that? I mean, the path is there for that to occur, and again, with, with that path, it allows all the other things that are reporting to take place, the residents get n- notified, uh, we understand what the impacts of that thing is going to, so they can do that today.
Well, no, you can't really logically apply for, you know, forty movies over a course of a seas- movie season, that's like, that's, our system.
If they want to do it in City Hall, they have, they can do it there. Right? I mean, if that's, if that's what, if, if Scott Talaw wants to run his movies in City Hall, that's a lo- city location, we paid for the building, let him go do that, I don't have a problem with that.
No, I don't either, but if they have a desire to do it somewhere else, they should have the right to apply for it.
He can apply for it, right, but he's got to apply for it, he's got to get a temporary use permit, and I'd make sure the residents are notified, that's my point.
And that's an impact event, I agree, but I think the ability to request to do a series should be part of it. You're not just one movie, and, you know, I mean, just even during COVID when we did those movies in, in, um, in Chili Cookoff Lot, it was, it would became a major issue to get a permit to do a one night movie. That is something, it just, you know, to me makes no sense, these are community events that the community really needed those, I thought, and we, you know, we need to make it possible to do that.
Yeah, I don't know how difficult it was to get a permit to do that. I thought when they, they requested the temporary use permit for the movie, that thing came through pretty quickly. I didn't see any.
Not, not if you're involved in it, it was, it.
Uh, I, at least I, I, I watched it, I watched it, and there wasn't a whole bunch of argument against it, so.
No, but it was hard to get because of the time, thirty-five days ahead of time caught everyone off guard, so, you know.
And then, I'm sorry, just to clarify on this, it sounds to me, this might be one of those areas of disagreement, perhaps, but Mikey, or Councilmember Pearson, I'm sorry, um, you, you're, I think this is where you'd be recommending that staff presents uh, a T U P mechanism for folks that want to do series where it's more than just six times a year. But a series, perhaps that would be a mechanism that goes before the planning commission to say that for calendar year, whichever, they would host these events on Saturday.
I agree, would involve, need some planning ahead on the applicant's part, absolutely. Um, but yeah, the ability to do that summer series or something like that every weekend, um, makes, makes a lot of sense.
But through the public hearing process?
If it's, if, I think we do have to decide, and to Steve's point, I don't have a perfect answer, what's an impact event and what's not. You know, if it's a few landscape artists with no amplified music, that's one thing. If it's, you know, two hundred people, you know, I think that's crossed a threshold for sure, you know? If it exceeds the parking available, that's an easy one to see, it's, it's an impact event. You know, there's some, I don't have every definition now, but yeah, there's, there's a level on events where they have an impact, like, and like Steve brought up, if it's disturbing the neighbors, that's, you know, can disturb the neighbors, that's an impact, obviously. Um, that's, that's not what we want, so, um.
And on the other issue we brought up with the, the construction yards, the sales trailer, is that an area of consensus where we do that?
Let the plan, let the planning commission take a look at that, yes, I have a problem with that.
I think it should be a all in one sort of thing, so, otherwise it's almost like piecemealing.
Yeah.
See, look, we're agreeing on so much right now.
Don't get overconfident, Mikey.
I, I appreciate that, council members, and what we'll do is we'll work on drafting a, a, a policy on this. Uh, uh, you know, perhaps some, we'll, we'll put something together to prepare that, to get it presented to the planning commission, um, and then for recommendations, and then bring it to the, to the city council, you know, for a zone text amendment, so we could amend, amend our municipal code.
Okay, so this goes, you're saying what came out of today's meeting goes to the planning commission first?
That is correct.
The Z T A, it has to.
Right, but, but, okay.
That's why, like he said, it won't be done for summer unfortunately, but, you know.
Okay, that, that, okay, and we'll see what the planning commission does, okay.
I mean, they're the ones I think is appropriate for them to define some of these things we have, not overly defined, so.
Yeah, you know, I'd like to see us trying to find some of them before it gets to them. Because what happens is, it's sort of like, you know, making sausage, right? Once you start doing this stuff, people start grinding stuff through, and God knows what you get out the other end, so. But look, I'll, it's getting late, uh, Richard's heard enough from me today, uh, so is Steve, so I'll back off and let it go to the planning commission, let's see what happens.
Well, I just wanted to be clear, you know, uh, you know, this, this is, you know, in your court right now, so, you know, you could, you could keep it in Zerasis if you wanted to, can you, to continue?
What, what I'd like, what, what I'd like to do would be interesting for me, if, whatever Richard puts together, I'd like to have, bring it back to Zerasis so we can read it before it goes to the planning commission. That's what I like, so at least we know that we said, yeah, this is what he said.
I think that's a great idea.
I like that idea too, Steve, that's a good idea.
And I was going to say further, and maybe at that point, if the committee, if this, this, you know, Zerasis committee here still, you know, feels that they're not comp, you know, that you're not willing to move something on to planning commission, you could always take that discussion back to city council.
Now, I think if we can get a look at it and at least agree that what we agreed to and what we didn't agree to, and then let it go to the planning commission, I think that may be the path to go, right? I, I don't have a problem, but I just want to make sure that when we get, before it gets to them, there's some sense of understanding of what we said today, because we said a lot of stuff, I said a lot of stuff.
And I, I.
I apologize.
I can think, I can see that, you know, Scott and Barry would like to chime in, but I'll say Scott and Barry that let the staff write this up, and then you can take the look like we can, and we can start to craft some more. I, I don't think we're gonna, we're gonna hit perfect here in one swing at this by any means. As she has with so far, my question would be, um, I guess it's Film Society question, what is their ability to apply for T U P now, I'd say any sort of venue, whether it's in a neighborhood or not, what, how does that work?
Um, I believe, sorry, I've had some breakup there, I don't know if it was me in my office.
Am I back?
I, I see you now.
Okay.
Was your question, what would it take to get the Film Society a T U P?
Yes.
So they could do it, so it'd be a, a thirty-two day public notice. Um, we, we, they, we would have to notice it for thirty-two days, and, uh, whatever venue they go to, they would be limited to, um, six, six events. Uh, right, the fourteen day issue comes up, and then they will issue six events per parcel per year. And so that would be the process that we would use.
So if they found, I'm just exploring this, because I don't know what I don't know. If they found a venue that was, you know, that would work, um, could they do like a film series for ten straight nights?
Yes, because that would be with.
Because that would be, okay.
Why, why don't they look at City Hall? City Hall used to be a venue for doing that kind of stuff. Uh, and there's plenty of parking, I, you just, I, you know, I don't understand why as opposed to chasing down, and if you're doing it in City Hall, I don't have a problem with it.
We have no problem with it, we've heard, that there's concerns with the sight lines.
Yeah, it's, it's not optimal, it's, it's, it's pretty average at best, but, but yeah, it is an option, but it's pretty average.
The other thing I just wanted to add in, and correct me if I'm wrong, Richard, is, is the Film Society or, or any, you could go, they could also go to any facility that has a C U P that allows that type of event to go on, uh, they would not need to go through the T U P process.
Do we, do we probably don't have a handy list of where those sites are?
No, that's one thing we don't have.
All right, guys, well, listen, thank you all very much, I think I, I've said everything I can possibly think of saying, so.
Appreciate your time, council members, thank you.
Thank you, guys, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Bob.
Could, could Mikey, could I have a motion to adjourn?
Oh, motion to adjourn, please.
And can I get a second?
I will second, roll call.
Councilmember Euring.
Let's see who doesn't want to do that. Yes.
I, Councilmember Pearson.
No, I want to talk. Okay, yeah, I say yes.
Thank you all very.